This is an expanded driveway for a golf cart garage. Here's a look at the house. Google did not drive down Laguna Royal Drive, so this is fortunately the end unit. So we have a good sense of where it is and what it is. Again, the lake is to the rear of the property. There's an overview of the site plan. I'll see if my clicker still works. What you can see is where that addition is being located at the existing home. And there are plans for patio spaces here at the southwest side and the north side as far as the house has an angle. The garage is additionally being proposed to be increased in order to facilitate that new garage for the golf cart. As far as the pictures go, I always love a good pencil drawing that shows exactly what's going on. So you can see from all sides. This is the left side elevation, as it were, the rear elevation, you know, that would be facing northwest, as it were, in the spot of that addition. And how it looks from the other sides, as well as a bit of an interior shot here as well. From a floor plan perspective, this is a, I think we're reimagining to a more modern lifestyle as the kitchen has greatly expanded. And in doing so, you lose a bit of space again. And here we are with second floor addition. It's more called out here on the left pitch, as it were. As far as our analysis goes, the proposed materials, colors, roofline are all very contiguous, very much in line with the existing home. They have already worked through the HOA. You know, as we've talked about, we are not bound by HOAs as far as our interpretation or conclusions based on these conversations. But we do always appreciate that folks, you know, are willing to work through the HOAs as well, get their approval. This does meet all of our intents of section 39, the zoning code, that's our design standards. And we have not received any public comments on this proposal this evening. So our recommendation is to approve the filed PZ 2549. It's at 100 East Laguna Royal. Subject to the exhibits provided by this applicant and two stipulations, I'll read for you. One is the building permit issued by the city will be required before any construction is to occur. Two, a 10-foot minimum billing setback is required along the end of the way to drive. We haven't had the chance to talk about this yet, but just so we're on the same page, the patio here at the south end, I couldn't tell with any extreme certainty as far as if that is an eight foot or 10 foot. But because it is a corner lot that cannot exceed the 10-foot side yard setbacks, because it is a street side setback. Just wanted to make sure that was on the record in the books. It's already within code. But sometimes in these applications, in these presentations, we'd like to reinforce it's already on the books. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and our applicant is available as well.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to give your name and address for the property?
Yes, my name's Louis Becker and I represent the owner, Steve and Debbie Cleveland. They own the property. I'm the architect for it and two, two of the main things was that on that addition is that we expanded the kitchen out. And actually that's going out underneath an already covered patio space. And then on the, on the kitchen end, the existing kitchen end, we added a small garage for a a golf cart. And then of course, the second story addition above the existing first floor for expanded bedroom space. So.
When he mentioned that the 10-foot setback on both corners, is that going to affect the second floor?
No, I think the, the second floor plan, I don't know if we can put the exhibit back up.
Can you put the floor plan back up?
Yeah, the, the hatched area there, that actually is that corner is 10 feet back already and we're not going beyond that. The patio, if that needs to be adjusted.
That's just padded, covered patio? Okay, so it doesn't, it's not, the second floor is not above that?
No, 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 no. It's only on the hatched area above existing footprint of the building now.
Okay.
So we, we hold the 10-foot setback on that, on the, what I would call the lakeside property, the northwest side. And quite frankly, I didn't show a 10-foot setback on that via Nueva side. I can make sure that when we submit for the building permit portion, we'll, we'll pull that back. And we can pull the patio, that column where the patio is there.
Is that via Nueva or is that Old Litchfield?
It's being the way.
Oh, oh, I said, there's a little bit more before the.
Right. We can, we can decrease that patio with, to accommodate that 10-foot setback. I don't, we don't want that column in that 10-foot setback, obviously. So.
You want to go through the variance.
Yeah, yeah, but we don't want to do that.
Any other questions?
I, I just was looking at the gas plan and it looks like the pipe is sized for two and, or for two pound delivery.
I'm, I'm.
Did I read that right?
It's whatever, whatever is.
Stop gas meters at a quarter pound.
Oh, okay.
So you might verify that.
Okay, okay. Yeah, the gas meter is already there. We're going to have to, we're making sure that we stay away from that gas meter, but we are adding some appliances for, for the gas. For instance, our, right now, there's a little 40, not even, probably a 30 gallon water tank under the stair inside the house. And we're actually going to change that and put it in the laundry room, a tankless water heater. There'll be gas. Because one under the stairs is electric.
And those things, usually the building safety, when they go for permit process will, will.
Yeah, those types.
That. So we focus mostly just on design and setbacks and parking.
But it is, you know, it is important, it is important to note that the gas meter is right there. It'll be, it's on that southwest corner of, yeah, right there where we're adding the the little garage for the, for the golf cart. So the gas meter is going to be against that wall. We're going to put a couple of steel ballards around it. So it doesn't get hit by the golf cart as it pulls in or anything like that. So we'll protect that for sure.
Any other questions? Did you hand draw a piece?
I did. Yeah, I've been doing it, I've been doing it for too long and it is, believe it or not, it's handed off to a CAD draftsman. I can just draw it up, you know, on something like this. That's the part of my job I enjoy, actually, sitting down and drafting it and drawing.
Okay, another question that someone like to present a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the subject to the exhibits provided by the applicant and the stipulation made by the city that the 10-foot minimum billing setback is required and the building issue that's due to your heart.
A motion, two or a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? And then all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Chair, board member Terry is on the.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, does he have anything to say or any questions?
Do you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think we already passed it, but did you have any concerns?
Nope, we're good.
Okay, good.
And board member Terry, what is your vote?
I approve.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Uh, next item is a wall relocation, PZ 2548. And the address is 117 East Fairway Circle is the applicant here. Okay. After he presents, then we may ask you a question.
Chair, this item 5B, this is a wall relocation request, PZ 2548. The owner is Judy Delgado. The address is 117 East Fairway Circle. And this is a request to rebuild the existing side yard wall along Fairway Drive. The zoning is R115 and I've got some imagery that'll help explain this a little bit further on the next slides. The request would remove an existing backyard wall that it butts at the rear corner of the home and extend it out to Fairway Drive to create a larger backyard. Expansion and rebuild does not interfere with the site visibility triangles or the chamfer requirement because the adjacent neighbor on the key lot does not have their driveway on this side. And I can show you on this subsequent slides. So here's a look at the side of the house. The wall in question is again extending off of this side of the house, going in this direction. That instead would come out more towards Fairway to create a larger yard for their enjoyment. The adjacent home. Right now there's chamfer right here and I'll zoom back out so you can see that is the clipped corner dog here. However, you want to describe the diagonal cut that is in place for key lots in case there is a driveway adjacent. As you back out of your driveway, you have a vision site as you back up. In this case, the driveway is on the far side. So the chamfer is not required nor necessary in this location. So here's a rough drawing. Judy and I worked on this together, you could say, to try to make sense of how to describe what we're trying to accomplish here today. So again, you can see the chamfer that would go away. There's about a 20-foot addition of additional wall and I would extend here on this red line. And then would have a bit of a turn. So it does not extend to the full length of the house. So there is a bit of a step back so that you do have that architectural, I guess, interest you can say with this. The other thing that the applicant did do is right there on the third bullet, we did receive a letter of support essentially from the adjacent neighbor on the key lot for this endeavor. So these are allowable within their existing lots. This, these houses were done when Indian School moved and dipped. And so these are some of those fill-in lots and didn't really fit in to those existing lots. And try to make sense of these houses that were 20 years younger than everything else around them. This does meet all the intents of section 30 of the zoning code. And again, we did receive a letter of support. So our request for you this evening is to approve the relocations filed PZ 2548 at 117 East Fairway Circle, subject to exhibits and two stipulations. One, the building permit issued by the city will be required before any construction is to occur. Two, the wall should not encroach on the required 15-foot street side setback apartment. What that entails is for walls on a street side setback, they are half the distance of the front yard setback. Yard is 30, street side is a 15. So right now they're losing a lot of that space to nothing on the street side. So this would reclaim that into their private yard. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
The, I'm assuming the finish will be in keeping with the house finish or?
Yes.
Any other questions for the staff or applicant? Proposal.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approved the wall relocation, PZ 2548, located at 117 East Fairway to include stipulations one and two, subject to the exhibit provided by the applicant.
Motion, a second?
I'll second.
I have two seconds. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is a new freestanding garage, PZ 2550 at 4889 North Village Parkway. And again, we'll have Randy present and then if you'll be ready to answer questions.
Yeah.
Chair, this is item 5B. I'm not sure why it says approval. Porsche model, please ignore that. This is a request to add a freestanding garage at an existing RV gate. The applicant is Lily Parf, the owner, Jason Khan, is at 4889 North Village Parkway. The zoning is R18 PD. This is within the village. The request would add a freestanding RV garage where the current RV driveway and RV gate are located along with the driveway. This does align with the existing allowances and we'll do a bit of right-of-way improvement as well, which I'll talk about here coming up. So here's the existing home. As mentioned, they have the benefit of being on the curve from North Village to West Village as it takes the turn around the bend and heads for Jackie Robinson. So this existing driveway is already here in place. The existing RV is, gate is here in place. And there is a tremendous amount of room to add this new structure. The thing I mentioned as far as right-of-way improvements, we had discussed this. There's a bit of trackout that's currently occurring as it's being used. As we've seen on some of the other custom homes in the village, there is an opportunity to put in pavers. We've seen that along those, right north of the Cloverfield and Jasmine intersection before you get to Aleppo Park. We've seen those sorts of improvements be supported by the HOA and reduce any sort of rock ending up on the road. I simp this down. The full version is in your package tonight, just to show as much detail as I could as far as where that garage is being located. Now, what we did talk about is in case of a true accessory structure, there is a size limitation of 500 square feet max. You'll see in the upcoming stipulations that is being stipulated that these become attached to one another and treated as one structure. Here's a depiction of pretty close to the home. You'll have to excuse the software. We've discussed this, the software has limitations as far as making it precisely look the same as it is here on the screen as far as how all those gables work. But we wanted to give the sense to the commission or to the board, excuse me, tonight, that will match in all colors, materials in massing to the second story home to a very similar sized garage. I think I spoke through that first bullet point. So this does meet all intents of the design section of our zoning code. We have not received any public comments on this proposal. And our recommendation is to approve the freestanding garage, file PZ 2550 at 4889 North Village Parkway, subject to exhibits provided by the applicant and four stipulations, which I will read. The building permit issued by the city will be required before any construction is to occur. Two, provide onsite retention for the 100-year six-hour event for new construction with a maximum 12-inch depth. Water used to go on the ground, water now hits the roof, it has to go somewhere. We've seen this in a few applications where we have to retain that. So it does not overburden the streets. Three, a public works permit issued by the city will be required before the driveway extension into city right-of-way is to occur. As we talked about, that gets off property but into right-of-way that's maintained by the HOA. We certainly appreciate any opportunity to reduce any trackout. So there's an additional permit with that. And then four, as mentioned, the two structures will be connected through a trellis, harbor, or other design features if to act as one structure to allow the size of the structure to be part of the main home's overall footprint. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and Lily is here as well.
A question about the lot coverage.
Yes.
As well within limits.
Chair, the applicant and owner benefit from a tremendously large-sized lot. So the calculations were done and they do not exceed the lot coverage limits.
And then as looking at the front drive-through, are they, is he going across right-of-way to, to exit?
Chair, in essence, every property goes across right-of-way to exits.
No, I mean, but it's not a, it's not a, yes, I'm not understanding where the road is. So between the, okay, so you have to come out across that where the trash can is.
That's correct.
Okay. And then, so are you proposing to repave that area?
So as of right now, as long as we can pass through the HOA, because the HOA realistically has a lot of jurisdiction in that area, even though it is on customers' property, sometimes it's not, depending on who you talk to in the HOA. Several houses to the east south of that are the custom homes that are on the 16th, I think the 16th hall. Some of the neighbors have taken out that rock to the sidewalk and curb and done pavers there. That is our intention. If the HOA does not allow it, then we have an alternative design where we're going to take out this Mexican fan pond here. And then we can tie the driveway into the existing driveway. However, I don't really want to do that because we have just way too much hardscape on front yard. It's going to be hardscape. So we want to keep the natural landscape in. So we do have an alternative depending on what the HOA decides, but.
Okay. Does anybody else? Oh, can you give your name for?
Let's go, Parf. Billy.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, anyone else have questions for applicant or the staff? Um, someone, a motion please.
I'll make a motion that we approve proposal subject to the exhibit provided by the applicant and stipulation one and four as presented by the.
Second.
Yeah, motion and a second. Any further discussion? Uh, any questions?
No.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay. Next up is another garage addition at 142 through 5 West Green Tree Drive South.
Chair, this is item 5D. It's a request for new garage addition cases, PZ 2551. The applicant is Lydia Reyes. The owners are Beth and Christopher Welsh. It's 14225 West Green Tree Drive South. The zoning is R115 PD within Litchfield Greens. This is going to use an existing driveway and create a new garage structure almost as an addition onto the home. It's very clever design. I'll show you on the next slides. The proposal would utilize a parapet roof to minimize its overall height, which does match some of the architectural features of the rear of the home. Here's a look at the rear of the home, just to better assist as far as where it's going. It's somewhat located in this area. Her drawing showed better than my Van Nuys does. And that garage is essentially right here, coming off the corner of the house. So just to give a better sense again, the garage doors you saw are right over here, driveway is right here. And this would come in very cleanly and crisply right at the corner of that existing home as essentially an addition onto the. And here's a look at those elevations again from the street side. That garage is as tucked away as possible, quite frankly, and especially at the angle, you're reducing your overall massing on the street side as well. So certainly, again, clever design, really excited to see. This has me, the intentions of section 39 of the code, we do feel so these are harmonious inclusions into the existing property. And we have not received any public comments on this proposal. So our request is to approve the garage addition filed PZ 2551 at 14225 West Green Tree Drive South, subject to exhibits provided by the applicant and two stipulations. These all look very familiar, but for the record, I always read them. So you don't have to. A building permit issued by the city will be required before any construction is to occur. And two, provide onsite retention for the 100-year six-hour event for the new construction with a maximum 12-inch depth. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and Lydia is here as well.
Any questions for staff or applicant? Bob?
No. Good job.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, let's try like to make a motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion. I move we approve as recommended by staff, item PZ 2551 home located at 14225 West Green Tree Drive South, moving a garage addition with the recommended stipulations one and two.
Okay, you have a motion? You have a second?
A second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Uh, next up is a wall replacement, PZ 2553, located at 203 West Biano Drive.
Chair, I have two presentations of the same house, but because of the applications came separately, I want to make sure that both are heard independently and both have an independent vote, but there'll be a bit of deja vu here in about three or four. The owner is Josh Campbell. The address is 203 West Biano Drive, just north of Scout Park. And this is a request to put a view fence where a block wall is today. We're very excited to talk to you about. The zoning is R115 and this would remove the dilapidated, I hope you don't mind me using that. Replace it with a view fence and columns. And I have no problem telling you, this is the first known application that is creating view fencing adjacent to a park, which is the code requirement, but everyone's just been grandfumbled in. So we're very excited to promote it and have it here this evening. Here's a look at that wall. We're looking northeast on the left. We're looking northwest on the right. He is essentially standing in Scout Park, taking the photos. And these proposals to block and fence components are harmonious with the existing architecture. Now, there's one caveat, which is certainly a part of your discretion here this evening. Staff is supporting this caveat. Proposal does meet section 30 of the code, which is regarding landscaping and walls. However, the applicant is proposing only paint, not stucco on the exterior side facing the park. It would be painted white. The joy, but concern, I guess you could say, is, is it going to look so much better than everyone's, quite frankly. The other two houses to the east and west will remain block unpainted. This one will be painted block and view fence. So there will be a difference in character from Scout Park. However, certainly this is the direction we want to go more so than the existing. But at your discretion through the DRB, the reduction of the architectural element of stucco is something staff is supporting and that you would need to make a determination on. We have not received any public comments on this proposal. Our recommendation is to approve the wall replacements, PZ 2553 at 203 West Biano, subject to the exhibits provided by the applicant. One stipulation regarding the building permit issued by the city will be required before any construction is to occur. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
The, is it like a partial wall up and then the iron above and then columns?
Yes.
Okay.
That is correct.
How, how high up? And then also is, there's a swimming pool. Usually it's, it's hard to meet both pool and that requirement with, if it comes up, because then you can't get the height required for pool safety. I've tried, but.
So chair, the, the goal is for a six-foot overall height. Our building official does review these conceptuals ahead of anything. He had not mentioned any concern of the split of block then fence. Normally, pool fences are all fence anyway. So this in some ways assists that by still maintaining that overall height, but having additional solid barrier between park guests and.
Yeah, I would say like if you, if the wall is partial height and then the total height is six feet, that actually someone can step up on the wall and it's lower than six feet then for, for pool safety. That's what I'm.
Thanks, Josh. To the, to the pleasure of you all. Hi everybody, I'm Josh Campbell. I'm here with my wife.
I'm a camera. Yeah, we really just wanted to expand the backyard and have a view of the park really as what we're after. So design-wise, I, I, we will fall into any code requirements that you have as far as the height of that, that low wall. And we would consider just building masonry columns and no masonry below and just doing all wrought iron, whichever is.
That, that may, because the building safety might insist on that, because it has to be a certain height without a foothold. So that nobody can climb over, no, we can climb over if it's also a pool.
There is. Correct, yep.
That would be my only thing. That would be my only thing, it would have to comply with milk, safety pool, pool closures. So, other than that, I have no um, objections to, to even just the white paint on block.
I don't have any objection to that either, but I wonder also if, I think, is it, what if, wouldn't people consider maybe they don't actually painted, tell the neighbors? Like it will stick out right now if they painted, whereas if they just left at CMU, um, it would paint, paint a little bit better. So I don't know if that's like something that they'd be interested in, or I'm kind of just throwing it out there.
Yeah.
As a temporary, if you go to paint it later, would another people maybe hopefully follow suit?
Or remember Dudley. In that area, across the streets of the west, China, we are just about done with the city initiated project to make a very tall wall. Uh, that very tall wall is because of the adjacency of a, a very tall building that's been, going to go across the canal to the south. And additional sound coming off Litchfield Road. There isn't any desire, nor will there be any change on the Yano side across the street. However, that being said, it becomes a situation that normally a wall between two neighbors is a civil matter. A wall between a private property or in the city becomes a city matter. So although we're not opposed to any sort of improvements on our side of the fence, I do just wonder if we, the city, may have some responsibility in painting that wall. I'd have to, yeah, I'd have to get some attorney interpretation of that, because maybe that is an opportunity for Scout Park beautification as part of the effort.
And I agree with Long Term, I just think like visually, if it is painted and the rest of them are not, then it will actually, it could actually draw attention to the spots that they're not drawing attention to. So I hear you saying, I'm just throwing it out there.
We have a similar situation in the village with someone that has the orange view fence and it's faded and they want to repaint it. Well, if they repaint, do we need to repaint our side of the view fence? Because it backs to our, it's a, it's a curious question.
Okay, I mean, I'm not, not going to say in the way of anybody.
I'd be more than happy not to paint it.
I guess, I mean, I guess we can leave it in.
We'll, we'll look at it.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can approve it probably as opposed, and then it's a discussion amongst city, like I absolutely would not be up close to a negotiation.
And to see an Eagle Scout project. Okay, um, so would someone like to attempt a motion on this one? I would, I would like someone to include a stipulation about uh, pool enclosures.
I'll make a, I'll make a, okay, um, that be approved proposal to replace the, um, solid block wall, the fence, get it to a free West Yano Drive. Subject to the exhibits provided, stipulation one by the city, and then also uh, after confirmation is made about the pool.
You have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Bob?
Nope.
Okay. No further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Steps. All right, next up, yeah. I'm not good at this. Just my touchscreens. Okay, uh, garage remodel. Uh, two, same.
Yes, so Chair, this is item five F. This is a garage remodel, PZ twenty-five fifty-eight, still at two oh three West Yano. Josh Campbell, still the applicant. This is a request to remodel the existing garage into livable space. Uh, garage, this application came in uh, later in the wall, but we're happy to have uh, Bo, uh, taking care of tonight for you. The zoning is R one fifteen. This would uh, remodel the existing home and add on to the west end for a new garage. The existing garage would be turned into livable space, and we do end up with a very strong mix of materials. It's always very hard to add on to a slant block house. How do you do it? How do you match, uh, what's there? It's not like it's readily available anymore, so I'll show you the before and afters. So here's the current uh, two oh three West Yano, if uh, for those long timers of Michael Somis' house directly next door. On Yano, still on Vice Towers. Uh, as far as uh, the existing garage is located around this area, new garage located here. Uh, we had to work uh, pretty extensively with drafts people over a few months and four different contacts. To get everyone on the same page, uh, but what we ended up with is what fits within the setbacks. Uh, I think we've had this conversation a few times as far as, we have a lot of situations where the built condition that the county experienced in our zoning code clashed. What it is, is creates uh, creative opportunities to try to address uh, these hardships quite frankly. Now, as far as uh, the materials goes, so we do have a mix of materials as far as the block, uh, some additional uh, applications on top of that block and along the entryway, a very large new glass entryway. And that glass continuing to the garage doors as well. And so we've mixed tower elements, parapets, the existing you know, the shingled pitch roof. And also continues here on the rear of the property as well, as far as, again, that mixing of materials bringing classic and modern together. Now, we do feel as though these improvements are harmonious with existing architecture. It does meet all of our intentions of section thirty-nine. And additionally, all the setback requirements of the R one fifteen district, and we have not received any public comments on this proposal. So our request would be to approve, uh, the proposed garage remodel, this is case PZ twenty-five fifty-eight. At two oh three West Yano, subject to two stipulations, same of uh, which we've always heard. A building permit issued by the city is required before any construction is, is to occur and to provide onsite retention for the hundred year six hour event for new construction with a maximum of a twelve inch depth. I'd be happy to answer any questions on this proposal, and Josh is at the lecture.
Yeah, I have more of a comment than a, uh, if you put on the elevation, I, it, it does kind of look really added on, and that my suggestion was like to make use of maybe a low wall on the opposite side to bring in some of that smooth stucco. To kind of blend it in, you know, without changing the exterior on the other side, but maybe could use it in landscape walls or planter walls or something. Um, uh, just to make it look more like, not just stuck on. That was, that was my design comment, but it's a, not a stipulation. Any, any other comments, questions?
I do have a question that is going to go along with the same lines of the sort of brick, um, veneer. Uh, it's sort of like a column, where do the parapets up a little bit higher? And does that serve of, is there a function to that, or is it just visually you're trying to kind of?
Just, yeah, e- exactly that. We were just trying to kind of blend the two, yeah, slump block construction with the stucco without it's looking, but w- we do have another rendition that um, the architect provided us without that, so it's just a stucco garage addition. Um, we're not really tied to either. We could certainly, if it's at the board's pleasure, we could certainly remove that and just add the stucco portion of the garage. We're not really tied to it.
So, and then that brick veneer, I'm sorry, and this, the material that, like she said, is it in painted brick as well, the same color as the slant block, or was it a different, totally different?
I've had a, don't recall. I know the house is being painted.
The house is going to be painted and updated on the, on the outside of white with a black roof eventually, and we were going to kind of keep something that keeps that same same view, whether it's painted.
I think your question was, so would the brick be painted also, or would it be a different color element to the?
My, my design professional, my wife is right over there, and I'm, I'm thinking we uh, are going to paint if this is the design that we end up building with finally.
Kind of just more of an added texture, more of a sort of thing like that. Uh, color.
Correct.
Um, I guess, uh, I'm only a little bit concerned as far as the elevations can, I, I, I feel like maybe these elevations, either I'm reading them wrong or not quite matching up to what my expectation is, because I feel like from the west, it, does that parapet continue down the side as shown there, or is it more like, kind of just on the fronts to call?
No ma'am, it's, it'll wrap around all three sides.
Right, and then the, the brick is only empty out of.
Correct.
Any other questions, concerns? Bob?
No, you've answered them, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
So, I'm sorry, I guess I do have one more question, though, if I, it's looking like you can't really tell that, so we'll have brick veneers sort of come out a little bit from the, perhaps there'll be a little bit of.
Yeah, just to provide some depth is all we're trying to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It doesn't work if you're trying to make them. Is there any further questions, discussion? Someone like to propose a motion?
I, I think, was that the, um, approve the uh, proposal for the remodel, the existing garage, movable space, uh, property. Uh, the property located at two oh three West Yano Drive. Subject to the exhibits provided by the applicant and stipulations one for, one and two made by the city.
I second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Good luck. Uh, new facade, PZ twenty-five fifty-four, um, for a new facade for home located at one thirty East Sterro Lane. And is applicant.
I'm here, I'm on Zoom.
Okay.
And, and I'm representing the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, this is Chair, good evening. Item five G is new facade, it's PZ twenty-five fifty-four. Kami is on Zoom, uh, you'll see her for this, not see, you'll hear her for this application, and I'm coming up again uh, later this evening. The owner is Rotilia, the address is one thirty East Sterro Lane. This is actually a house we've talked to you, you about before. And this is to uh, continue that of modernization and update the existing facade to coordinate with our last conversation. You could say, I think, late last year. The zoning is R one fifteen, uh, this request would update the facade of the existing home to a more modern appearance. This proposal basically ties in with a previous accessory structure. That accessory structure had a lot of conversation at our last uh, meeting, not our last one. The meeting, we talked about this, uh, I think at late last year, because there was a, I guess you could say a, a difference of architectural styles across those. That work has not yet begun on that accessory structure in anticipation of this being the second half of that update. So once these are married up, the work will commence. So this is a look, uh, the existing front facade, and I have the after imagery as well here to present to you. This would have, you know, replace the existing uh, overhangs of the windows. Bring out an almost new room, uh, here in the front of the home, and have that new fence element as well with the columns. And here's just a look at it straight on, as you can imagine, uh, the new accessory structure just to the right or to the northeast-ish of uh, the home is now going to marry up very well with this proposal. Now, we do feel as though these uh, improvements are harmonious with the existing uh, plant, future, yet to be architecture that's yet to come. This does meet all the intentions of section thirty-nine of the zoning code. We've had this conversation a few times as far as why am I showing you this? Why is this not an administrative approval? I've read and reread this section a few times, uh, we are on pace for twenty-five, thirty percent more cases this year than last year. I think some of those should have been shown to you, and again, I'm always going to err on the side of caution, have this conversation with all of you. So my administrative approval is only a finish in color change. When we do have this sort of facade update, this sort of changing to the front walls as well, I wanted to at least have this conversation with you. Uh, just so you had the opportunity to speak on this. And we have not received any public comments on this proposal, so our request is to approve the facade update filed PZ twenty-five fifty-four at one thirty East Sterro Lane. Subject to the exhibits provided by the applicant, one stipulation, building permit issued by the city will be required before any construction is to occur. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and Kami's on the phone as well.
Okay, thank you. Any um, questions, comments?
I have some questions, I don't think it might be for Kami, but um, so the, the the driveway paper that's shown there, that will be, will be an entire, is that going to be like replacing entire driveway on the side for the garage? Is that what that is?
Are you talking about the front courtyard? I'm looking at that, sorry, there's not like a presentation laptop showing the, your image very well, but I, I can see it on the TV.
So, well, on the, on the package, there's a, there's a materials page, and it has a driveway paper?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. So that will be for that front um, courtyard area, and then something else we're going to do after this, which we'll have to resubmit for, is a half circle drive that we're going to then use that material for. We will probably take it into the existing driveway and just either border the existing driveway to um, you know, just create kind of like a complimentary flow there. But we haven't really discussed what we're doing with that existing driveway, especially since they have that other structure going to the backyard. Um, so that may change a bit.
Okay, and then, and then I guess the other big change in anything is just about the addition of the arch, but the, um, thing kind of.
Yes.
Okay.
So she wanted to do an arched door, so a large like glass and iron arched door, and so we did want to um, change that squared off opening, lower it a bit, so it's not so um, I don't know, overpowering, and um, you know, line it up with that arched door, so there's some symmetry there.
Great. Yeah, so. Any other questions for staff or applicant? Who's turn? I need to make a motion, okay. Sorry, I'm trying to find the want to make sure to include everything Randy has, um, make a motion to approve the proposal subject to the stipulations given. Okay. You have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Said an aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Uh, and let's see, next up is um, updated backyard structures. PZ twenty-five fifty-six located at five one four East Fairway Drive.
Yes, good evening. Item five H backyard structures, PZ twenty-five fifty-six, the owner is Scott Mikes. The address is five oh four East Fairway Drive. This is a request to build a freestanding pergola and shed within the rear yard. You're not getting deja vu, you've seen this one before. It's been a little while and there's been some changes. The zoning is R one fifteen. The request would add a pergola in the rear yard, adjacent to the golf course, and a storage shed closer to the house, beyond any existing wall. Now, you've seen this before, uh, the original plans were for a hexagonal, hexagonal. Someone check in, uh, Ramada, that was going to end up being too close uh, to the rear setbacks, so there was a variance request and grant for a reduction to that setback to six feet nine inches. And variance runs the land, that variance is still available to be used, and it's being utilized for these requests. Here's a depiction of the home, it's on a curb, uh, the house is somewhat angled on this angled lot. What I wanted to show with this is, uh, the garage is the newer portion of the home. There's a bit of courtyard between the two and then the rest of the home. The shed posed is all the way tucked behind the hedges, behind the wall near the golf course. And it's just, uh, it's going to come up here in a second, just wanted to plant that seed. Here's some uh, renderings and elevations of what's being posed from the front as we work our way around. And then to the backyard. And the Ramada being posed, I have additional imagery. This Ramada would be, let's call it in north side as the house is in an angle adjacent to the course. We've seen this a lot lately on our proposals as far as the freestanding wall for entertainment purposes. I think one person saw the neighbor had it and then everyone had to have it. Everyone met us bits, I guess, from the barbecue area. Now, the shed is, I guess you could call it a more standard affair sort of shadow. But the good news with this is as far as the colors, the roof line, it does end up very much matching the home, even though it is somewhat of prefab design. The material change is the difference. So in this sort of situation for storage building, staff is supportive of that alteration from the design code because you, yes.
Do you, do you have an aerial view of the lot?
It's coming. So again, it's shed and then this is an example Ramada, which will be very much matched. Again, as mentioned, the curve of the road and the curve of the driveway are here. This is, this is not true to the road. This is turned to give a better sense of how this all works. So the Ramada or pergola, what have you, is all the way back here in the center, right there. The shed is right here, the darker, at the very corner of the building. And I can right there. This one specifically.
Oh, okay.
So just to go back a second. It'd be all the way somewhere around here. We do have a tremendous amount of shrubbery and distance, quite frankly, from the road. Now, being a hitched roof, we benefit from matching the house, but we also increase height. So there is a trade off there because there is small chance as you take the curb, you could look back over your shoulder, through your car, through the hedges, through the palms and see a bit of that peak of roof. But again, I exaggerate this conversation just to say that in a normal circumstance, this wouldn't meet our intent. In the circumstances that are presented and the opportunities to tuck it as it is, this is something staff feels as though we can support and this is this.
The limit, I thought we were limited to one accessory building per site.
So Chair, I've, I've heard that conversation and I've read parts of that code and I still don't fully think it's as black and white as we hope. There's, there's conversation about when there's a structure further back than the rear of the home. Not necessarily the side yard, but structures in the rear yard. I know split hairs here, but the concern is that there shouldn't be more than a twenty five percent coverage of the rear yard. So there is some benefit when you do have the plane of the rear of the home as the starting point of what is considered backyard. Air quoting for those on the phone. This being so far removed from the backyard per se and almost having two backyards. We didn't feel as though that was an overreach in our interpretation of that section of code and we do feel as though this is supportable.
So there wasn't really a numerical limit to how many accessory?
Chair, I, I don't, and I have not in the past read it as that sort of situation. I think we end up in situations that we might find other violations of that sort of situation. I know, I think of a very large house on Old Litchfield Road next to the Wiglon, I think we can all think of that had to go through that sort of situation, but I don't think the circumstances are the same in this instance. So as far as our analysis goes, again, we're having some allowance for a difference of materials. We do think this does meet the section thirty nine design standards overall as far as harmonious sort of situation. We have not received any public comments on this proposal. So our request is to approve the backyard structures, PZ twenty five fifty six at five one four East Fairway Drive. Subject to the exhibits provided by the applicant and stipulations one and two, excuse me, there's a typo there. One, a building permit issued by the city is required before any construction is to occur. And two, provide the onsite retention for the hundred year, six hour event for new construction with a maximum of a twelve inch depth. We have to answer any questions.
App applicant present? Could you, could you state your name for the record? I guess I just thought that where the, the new pergola is going to be, is it, there's like a hedge behind it already?
Yeah, they're Scott, Scott, by the way, Scott Mikes, five one forty, Sparrow Drive. They're currently, right now, we have we're changing out a lot of stuff. And there, the hedge is that you saw in the picture and also there's additional pictures I submitted of around the house with the golf courses, because the golf course is off the right and the back of the house. Currently, there are oleanders there. We're ripping out all the oleanders in order to get our fencing in, in order and also various plants like ficus, ficus trees and other like types.
That new wall is golf course?
Yes, there's golf course on the right there. Yeah, golf course.
I think I saw an aerial, like a, an aerial from Google Earth or something.
There's, yeah, the golf, the golf course is on the, it wraps around the side to the back of the house.
Okay. So if, so I'm just saying that the backside of that wall, it's, that's been a problem in a couple other places where people don't want to look at the backside of someone's entertainment wall, so.
Yeah, there's going to be, there'll be plants to help block and additionally with new plants when we rip out the oleanders to, to cover the, the shed and all that stuff as well.
Okay.
Can I ask a clear language? And I'm not, honestly, I don't remember how this update to pergola differs from those previously.
It was, poor Scott's worked on this for years and we completely started over. The, the original one, was it six sided or eight sided?
Six, it was a six, yeah, 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 six, six sided. Go ahead.
It was about yearish.
If you see where, where that, that's a fire, that, that's a fire pit right there. It was just coming right off of that, that short straight edge there to create, create that. And we originally, we had through the, what is it, board of adjustments? Is that what you got through? Yeah, because originally for some odd code piece, we had a zero setback. So we had no, we had no ability to do anything. And so with that, there was that different structure since, you know, with cost and redesign and looking at different things, we decided to exclaim that. Actually, it was, it seemed to be, it was a little bit big for the space and so it kind of reduces it, opens it up a little bit. So we went for the redesign.
So I'm wondering, kind of vaguely remember there being a wall, not a design, or am I?
There was, there was a, yeah, there was a wall, there was a wall built for a fire pit where there's going to be a TV or it was a fireplace where there was going to be a TV and stuff like that. Yeah.
Those kind of like.
It was, it was actually, it was actually towards the side of where the current, the, the new proposed pergola is going to be and
So sort of basically the same.
Yeah, and you'll see, and you see all along the edges is to soften everything up in between whatever structure we have. And what he's highlighting there, that is all golf course right there to make sure that's, that's, that's softened up.
Right now, there's no fence or just?
Uh, there's, well, there's, there's both, there's, currently the side yard is only being, is, it only has oleanders around right now. We're doing fencing. We have an issue with coyotes getting into our side yard and sliding through the, the pool. The, the backside of the yard is just the traditional wool fencing right now. And so we have lots of activity behind us with people walking their dogs and trying to dig underneath there and the coyotes being able to just kind of slide through the, there. So that's why we're going to build up a little bit with better fencing so it can be all the way, all the way around. So that's why we're losing the, the oleanders too, but then reinvesting in a whole lot of big plants.
It's kind of like a sloping issue, wasn't there?
They're sloping, yeah, they're sloping everywhere with the great, with all the grading and everything that we're, we're doing. But we hired a, a great company to oversee the whole, we have a company that's overseeing the entire thing. And then a, as you guys can see in the additional plans that were submitted as well with it.
Well, so that was all to say for me, I think I, if we say, you know, all subjects that, that it's not like we're kind of saying like these plantings behind the wall that are going to grow up.
So, board member does a great clarifying points. I have brought commercial landscape plans to this board for consideration. The discussion tonight is only regarding pergola and shed. So yes, you do see things on plans. It's very similar to when we approved designer review plans, they showed square and they show signs on the buildings. You're not approving signs and not proving the CSP, you're just reviewing the architectural structures.
And we have no neighbors to our, well, the side, the, the right side of the house, neighbor only on the left side.
That's where that sidewalk on the backside or the golf course?
Um, actually, it's a little bit, yeah, it's actually, it's a little bit further down. Yes, there, there's a house where, where there's an abandoned road that are, that's deeded over to us. And then there's a house and then right next to that house is a sidewalk that takes you along to the blue course, a sidewalk for that.
I think I would just add a stipulation that some planting is required to kind of screen the, the new pergola.
And in the, in the plans, there's detailed, actually things are, it's very specifically what plants will be.
Yeah, since we're not approving that.
Oh, yeah, that's
We just want, we can leave it to staff approval, but we do want to stipulate that they will be required.
It's more about like screen, uh, wall.
Yeah.
And so, so it's very nice.
Okay. Would someone like to, you want to take the motion then?
Sure.
Are there any questions for applicant or staff? No?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so I will make work to improve the proposed backyard structures around PZ twenty five fifty six located at five and fourteen East Fairway Drive. Subject to the, 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 and stipulations one and two made by the city and, and also stipulated that there will be screen, screening, some sort of a dedicated screen, uh, or, uh, facing the golf course. That's all right.
I'll second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Do a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is a new guest house. PZ twenty five fifty seven located at forty eight twenty two North Baranco Drive. And is applicant? Oh, okay, Kami?
Yeah, that's me again.
Okay, go ahead, Randy with your.
This item five I, new guest house of PZ twenty five fifty seven at forty eight twenty two North Baranco. I don't know if anyone noticed how to say better than that. Drive is a request to construct a guest home in the rear of the house, the rear of the yard, excuse me. It means R one eight, P D is in Village. This would be a freestanding guest home in the rear of the lot. Don't like said rear of the home, excuse me. It's a verbally unwritten. Now, there's one caveat here. The exhibits depict a structure that is too tall for the required step back, setback. The applicant will be adjusting the roof line to fit with the allowances of the setback. I will explain this in more detail with visuals. Here's a look at the front of the house. As you're driving by, you'll be none the wiser that there is a guest home in the rear. Now, the proposal was anticipating using the five foot required setbacks. And that is accurate and get to that in the next presentation. When you are ten feet in height or less, yes, you have a five foot setback. And as you increase above five feet, you add an additional foot of setback. What happens is though our intention is for the guest house to be a miniature version of the main house. And their exhibits show a match in architectural style, roof line, materials, all the above. You end up with is a nearly fourteen foot tall guest house. What happens then is that you would need to add four feet as ten plus four setback to be a nine foot setback from side yard and from rear yard. If you take this and increase this from five to nine feet, we then end up with a separation of less than ten feet of the main house. If, 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 and if. So Kami and I had a conversation about which way we wanted to go about this as far as do we want to attach to the home? Or do we want to lower the overall height? You'll see a stipulation tonight and certainly well, Kami can, you know, confirm. The goal is to basically split the difference is to reduce to an eleven foot height and increase the setback to six. Because right now the distance between the guest house and the home is eleven feet. So we would reduce that to the ten foot separation requirement and we would increase the setback from siding rear to six. Thus lowering the overall height to eleven. You'll see also some labeling changes on here. Just to clarify here in the Sleepy Park, this is a guest house, not an accessory dwelling. You'll see additional red lines here on these depictions as well. You can have sink, you could have fridge. There isn't an allow, allowance for cooking facilities as that then quantifies as a dwelling unit. So there isn't any plans, but we do like to reinforce this in these depictions and in these conversations and certainly through our building official inspections, nothing of that could occur. We'll go on and make sure everyone's on the safe page here at the start. Now, as I've talked through this analysis, this is going to change slightly from what's being presented. As you are the reviewers of the architectural components, we do not want to delay the applicant and the owner any further without at least showing you this and having this conversation. Like, thank Kami, Kami and I started this conversation about this project many months ago and with summer recess, this has somewhat been a delayed presentation to you. We have not had any public comments on this proposal. So our request is to approve the new ghost houses, PZ twenty five fifty seven at forty eight twenty two North Baranco. Subject to the exhibits provided by the applicant. Three stipulations. One, a building permit issued by the city is required before any construction is to occur. Two, provide onsite retention for the hundred year, six hour event for the new construction with a maximum twelve inch depth. Three, guest house will meet all requirements of the zoning code section thirty one oh three D through updated designs as part of the building permit. Again, we would consider this a field adjustment is the fancy way to say it and evolution of these plans. There, your approval does not grant immunity from these sections of code. This is just another opportunity to reinforce code as these move from conceptuals to construction. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Kami is on the line.
Thank you. Questions for staff or applicant?
I have a quick question. I just, I should see it where I don't think about, I'm assuming all the materials proposed are so that it's a current house.
Yes, it's a mini mean. I don't know if that's ref, is that still a reference?
Yeah.
Like twenty five years or?
There's one thing to confirm, they just didn't see where I assume it's correct by the
Other questions? Motion.
I move that we approve as suggested by staff concerning the new guest home, PZ twenty five fifty seven. And the action to approve a new guest home at forty eight twenty two North Baranco. With the three stipulations that staff want and also the onsite retention for the hundred year, six hour event for the new construction.
You have a motion to have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? You say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, and I think I have our last spot. Vergula structure, PZ twenty five sixty four. Discussion, okay, pergola structure, structures located at four twenty South Line Circle.
Chair, this item five J, pergola structures, PZ twenty five sixty four. The applicant is Omar. The owner is chasing. And the address of, and the request is to build two structures in the rear yard. His own is R C P D. This request would construct two pergolas in the rear yard, which backs to the Thomas. The Thomas is also known as Mistago. It's also known as that church in the corner of Indian School and Old It's also known as that church in the corner of Indian School and Old Litchfield Roads. Now, this proposal is in response to a coenforcement case. The structure has somewhat been constructed and. With Rena's assistance, we've been all working together to bring this before you tonight for consideration. So here's a look, I guess you could say the before image, what you're looking at is. From, you know, just coming off of the Thomas, looking at the rear of the yard, what is being proposed for you is. Not shown, but here on the backside of the home. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you're correct. I apologize. Yes, this is not the corner house. I'm showing you pictures of the corner house. It is the next one. I'll keep going, because I have good pictures. This is the depiction of what is being proposed. It is a mix of materials that is certainly not slump block. The neighboring house, his house. Right there at the end, which is right by four twenty, is a slump block material. Uh, with somewhat elements and certainly the asshole shingle roof. This is somewhat compatible, but also certainly modern in comparison. That is trying its best to complement, coordinate, but certainly not match. That existing structure as, again, a slump block pergola would be a sight to see, but certainly would bring this into a more modern design. With light. Now, we do think these are.
Is it picture you're showing one of the two or it's a two together? That's the two together.
It's two sides.
But that's showing two of them. That's not.
The two of them together become the swan.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And Chair, just, I'll be on the microphone to say that this is a depiction of one, both are matching.
Oh, that's a depiction of one, just one.
Am I wrong, or is this both?
Yeah, so it's both. So there's two structures side by side that are split in the middle and those are those two structures that every.
Thank you.
Is there gonna be two of those?
And so that's the one whole structure as one.
Okay.
In all, there's two that are split down within of the structure. So that gap down in the middle, you see where that's split is. That's split into two structures to create one whole representation.
And just for Bob's benefit, because we're talking across the.
Yeah.
Across the room here, uh, this is a depiction of everything.
Okay.
Good. Now, we do feel as though these are harmonious additions that can quite maybe do its best to match a slump block home. It does meet the intention, tenant section, tent of section thirty nine, excuse me, lots of conversations. And again, this has been an ongoing effort through planning, through code enforcement, to find a solution that could work. Uh, for the applicant's requests as well as the code requirements. We have not received any public comments on this proposal. So we would request to approve the proposed pergola filed, I see twenty five sixty four. Located at four twenty South Lila Circle, subject to exhibits provided by the applicant in two stipulations, again, the title. Building permit issued by the city will be required before any construction is to occur. Two. The wood elements and roof elements shall match the visible structure as being shown and depicted for you, which is again, a reemphasis of the desire to. Come as closely as we can to the existing home without expecting a slump block. I'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicant and owner are also here as well.
Um, without a site plan, this is within the required, or the required placements on the site?
It's shared. Yes, thank you for bringing that up. We've been, again, as mentioned, working for. Quite a few minutes, quite frankly, trying to find the right solution. In your packet today, you'll see a narrative that lays out all of these, all these requirements as we've emphasized and worked together to find. I do not have a, a bird's eye depiction of how that would fit, but certainly, as Rena and I have been very much involved. This, there's no, there's no, no opportunity to not do what's being requested as some of this structure had already been completed and now made adjustments according.
Any other questions for staff or applicant?
The roofing material, it says, um, brown or duffel, I'm, I'm assuming this is gonna match, they could take house of the.
My name is Omar, Omar, for Dixon Kinder. So, yeah, um, we built the structure with the metal roof and we will change it to, uh, to match that home.
Okay. Any other questions? Gonna make a motion?
Uh, I can make one. I move as recommended by staff, the application PG twenty five sixty four. Uh, be approved, the action to, possible action to approve pergola structures located at four twenty South. Lila Circle. Also the, also the stipulations.
You have a motion? Okay, a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, um, next up, staff report on current events. Move it through that fast.
Chair, a couple of things. Firstly, happy birthday to Rena on Saturday this weekend.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
We have. Substantial amount of interest in the city. We love having these opportunities to talk to you and see people continue to invest in their homes. I'd like to thank you all for your consideration, for having a special meeting next Thursday, the fourteenth. Uh, Bob said he's gonna stay in Wisconsin, he's not gonna come down, but he'll be available via Zoom, that's just fine. We ran into a situation where we could have hit all the marks to have those conversations with you tonight except for the newspaper. A newspaper just takes forever to get a posting in a newspaper for public notification. Because of the two board of adjustment hearings. I don't want to speak to those just too much yet, because you'll have an opportunity to see the packet. When I get back to my desk tomorrow and we'll get that routed and getting over to you. But that delayed this conversation for weeks, so I appreciate your consideration for having another meeting in a week, as of her. Other than that, if you've seen the hill lately, it's going, it's going. Uh, my hair's flowing and I'll get a haircut once the projects are done, uh, because quite frankly, I don't have any opportunity to. Not think about everything going up a little more. Uh, if you do have the opportunity, and I've said this before and I'll continue to address it, it's going to look bad. It's gonna look real bad. It's torn up. You'll see some concrete going in to reinforce, uh. Cuts they've made so it doesn't slough and fall onto them as they're doing construction. The library, we hope to start construction in about six weeks to push dirt, I'd say, and. The park improvements will follow as far as pushing dirt sometime in the spring. You'll note there's a very large pile of dirt on the north side of the property that's basically our. Playground as we need to re terraform and create parking lots and ADA compliance and fire truck access. There's a pile of spoils that were spoiled to happen, I guess we could say. Uh, we thought we would have the final conceptuals for lot thirteen and lot fourteen for you this evening. They're very close. They're in my inbox. We are working through some final design considerations, so we will have that for you in September. And then lots one and lot two have closed and they should be starting construction. In ninety days, as during last night's city council meeting, during the regular meeting, uh, they approved a ninety day extension to. Have their ground break. Uh, you should see a construction fence going up soon with a beautiful banner, just like H and B has done. For lots three and four and they'll get going, uh, before the end of the year. And with that, I think that's enough current events.
Um, do any board members have any current events? So I will probably be participating via Zoom possibly, uh, away, but I'll let you know if I have an opportunity to, to come down. With nothing else, uh, motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you. Have a good night.